Regular board meeting for the school district of Waukesha Board of Education. Today is April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Morowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And Mrs. Ettinger, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you so much. We're going to start tonight with bright lights, and I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Seibert to introduce our group tonight.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We are very fortunate to be able to recognize our winter sport and club successes this evening. This has been a new tradition in the School District of Waukesha, recognizing at the end of each of those seasons. And so we're grateful to have many of our students, student athletes, coaches, and advisors here with us, along with our athletic directors and one of our principals. So to get us started tonight, we're actually going to begin with Waukesha South, and we're going to start by inviting Mr. Schreier up to the podium to recognize the great success of the winter for the Blackshirts.
Thanks, everybody. Just first off, thank you so much. Is that better? Thanks again. Thanks so much for helping us celebrate and honor our student athletes. This is an incredibly busy time of year, and our student athletes simply keep pushing and keep working hard. ACT on Tuesday, a lot of hard work, just a busy field house, a busy auditorium, busy spring schedules, and the work that our student athletes, both athletically and through activities, never stops and never ceases to impress me. We had a great winter season at South High School. We get to honor nine groups who competed at the state tournament, with two very special groups here who had tremendous accomplishments. So the first group, powerlifting sophomore Aiden Lenz qualified for the state tournament in his first year coming out for powerlifting. He's also a wrestler. He ended up placing eighth. Aiden and his coach, Mr. Saub, are both brand-new to competitive powerlifting this year and are very excited for Aiden's future, as well as the future other South athletes have in powerlifting. Second, one of our teams that has had a ton of success, including a couple of state titles, Waukesha South Esports is made up of two different Fortnite teams and eleven players. They qualified a team for the WIH SCA Winter State Tournament. Captain CJ Ziegler, Dominic Wirica, Blake Volkman, and Joel Rosada placed sixth out of twenty-nine teams in a grueling all-night battle royale. Coach Andy Yap and Coach Jake Forstek would like to thank the school district for allowing esports for all of our student athletes, as it provides a place for students who oftentimes don't compete in traditional after-school sports. Next congratulations is to our eleven Waukesha South CMH Swim and Dive athletes who competed at the Division One State Meet at South High School. South CMH had the most number of student athletes competing at the state meet out of any team in the state. Your Blackshirts competing at the state meet were Ben Babcock, Grant Bergman, Logan James, Kyle Johnson, Sam Lem, and Eric Standarsky. The shirts were led by junior Kyle Johnson, who podiumed finishing sixth in the five-hundred free. Our ski team also headed to state. It is a co-op. They skied at Mount La Crosse. Two South students skied at state, including three-sport athlete Connor Boyle and two-sport athlete Brandon Schatzman. Brandon is a sophomore who's playing his second season of varsity tennis for the Blackshirts this year. Connor is a three-sport athlete who was named first-team All Classic Eight Conference in soccer and is a two-time state pole vault qualifier. He has a tremendous track and field resume as well. In his first indoor meet this year, Connor broke a forty-four-year-old Waukesha South record by pole vaulting fifteen feet and one inch. This past weekend, he re-broke the school record and broke the conference indoor record by pole vaulting an impressive fifteen feet and three inches. Our next group is the Waukesha South Dance Team. They had a successful twenty-three, twenty-four season, consistently finishing in the top five throughout the season in both of their categories. The culmination of their season came when they placed sixth at the Wisconsin Association of Cheer and Palm Coaches State Competition, missing out placing by only five points. In addition to a successful team competition season, Julia Barron, a junior on the Blackshirt Dance Team, had an incredible individual competition. Julia consistently placed in the top three for her solo at all of our competitions throughout the season, including multiple first-place finishes. Her season was capped off by earning herself a spot on the All-State Dance Team at the state competition. Next up is South Mock Trial, who has won an impressive three state titles in the last five years. They took third at state this year. They were the top-ranked team going into the fourth round. Unfortunately, there was only one other undefeated team at that point, and the bar's power-matching system pitted them against each other. Coach Mueller was incredibly impressed by her team's performance, saying, "This is the most talented and experienced team I have coached. I truly believe they're the best in state." This is the fourth year in a row they have placed in the top five. Our next group is wrestling. Waukesha South Wrestling is a growing program that we have a lot to be proud of. They had two state qualifiers this season. Ethan Kojus is a senior and finished the season with an incredible record of forty-four and three and was the Classic Eight Conference Champion. Adame Lamus became South's second female state qualifier and finished her season with a record of twenty-seven and twelve. The wrestling program at South continues to build, as we had over forty consistent athletes with six girls in the wrestling program. The next two groups that we'd like to celebrate are here with us, so I'm going to ask that the academic decathlon team come on up and Coach Hart. We have an incredible group here. We'd just like to give a congratulations to Coach Hart and the Waukesha South Academic Decathlon Team for qualifying for state this year. It was the second team, the second time we have qualified for state since the team was restarted five years ago, but only the first time we were able to physically participate because the first time was during COVID. The team qualified with only a partial team of seven of nine participant spots filled. The team members were Alan Leehold, Jonathan Cook, Ryan Burner, Colton Wan Schneider, Kenny Weber, Anna Schulte, and Thea Young's fam, who are with us today, and Rowan Abbott. It was a learning experience for the team, but the team came away with several individual honors. Jonathan Cook earned a gold medal in the Social Sciences category. Alan, Colton, Rowan, Anna, and Ryan all placed in the Super Quiz Relay, and Alan won a trophy as the top scholar for Waukesha South. So a big congratulations to Coach Hart and all their work. Thanks. And then our last spectacular group that we want to bring up is our five-time defending state champ cheer program. Coaches, you can come up, too. The Waukesha South Cheer Team has some remarkable achievements in the two thousand and twenty-four WACPC State Championships. Winning the coed division for the fifth consecutive year is a testament to their unwavering dedication and exceptional talent. Our cheerleaders continue to set the standard for excellence. It's worth noting that we had not just one, but two routines qualify for state. Coed and game day, a feat that hasn't been accomplished since two thousand and twenty-two. Not to mention, they secured both the first and second-place spots in the coed stunt groups All-State Division. Additionally, the Blackshirt cheerleaders qualified for high school cheer nationals and advanced to finals in both the tumbling and game day divisions. This achievement reflects the consistent excellence and growth of our Waukesha South Cheer Team, whose dedication to perfection and teamwork has undoubtedly set a new standard for success within our program and beyond. So thanks again for letting us celebrate all the great things that are happening at South High School. I do have one other celebration slash announcement, I guess. We are hosting a great night, or hopefully a great night, at South High School on Friday at seven PM. South is honored. We were chosen to host the annual Waukesha Fire and Police versus New Berlin Police and Fire Boots and Badges Basketball Game. So the game will feature our Blackshirt Marching Band performing before the game, our five-time state champion cheer program performing at halftime, as well as our dancing team performing with a combined dance with the Milwaukee Dancing Grannies. All proceeds will go to the Waukesha Food Pantry and the Prey Memorial Fund. We're looking forward to just a tremendous night. It's seven PM. Doors open at six.
Dan, did you have anything about the area?
Sure.
We do have an update, too, in terms of conference realignment. Conference realignment task force met again yesterday. They did a press release. They are recommending to the Board of Control, which would be April twenty-third, that West and, I'm sorry, that South and North do move to the Woodland Conference. That would be for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six year. So the task force recommended that move, which will get voted on by the Board of Control on April twenty-third. So we will hopefully update community members once we have more information following that vote.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Absolutely. Well done.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Congratulations.
All right. Next, we're going to invite up Mr. Dan Domak. We are very grateful to him. He has returned to the School District of Waukesha after a storied career to assist us in filling out the role of Athletic Director at North for the remainder of this school year. So welcome, Mr. Domak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. One other piece I wanted to tell you about the conference realignment is that the vote for the committee was sixteen to zero. So really, really positive from a standpoint, so there was nobody going against it. And again, the WIE Board of Directors will make those final decisions in two weeks, but it looks like it's in a real, real good position, and it's something that we've been, I started ten years ago. So it's something to be able to come back and see this actually happen makes me pretty happy. So I'm here to talk a little bit about Waukesha North High School tonight. The first group I'd like to recognize is the Waukesha Wings. Record for the twenty-three, twenty-four season was sixteen wins, ten losses, and two ties. They were the second-place finisher in the Classic Eight with an eight-and-two conference record. The coach wanted me to let you know that they beat Arrowhead. They beat Marquette. They beat Kenosha, Homestead, Muskego, West Bend, and Cedarburg. So they had a really, really tremendous season for us for this year. Another group I'd like to basically bring to your attention is our Academic Decathlon Team. That team placed fourth in their division and ninth overall at state for Waukesha North High School. I'd like to bring up Lily Donovan. Congratulations to Lily Donovan. Donovan, a senior at Waukesha North, who earned the honor of performing with the International High School Honors Choir Performance Organization this past February at Carnegie Hall in New York City. Lily is also the Waukesha North High School Choir President. Lily earned the opportunity to perform at the state solo and ensemble with the Chamber Choir Jazz Assembly, her classical and musical theater vocal solos, and a vocal duet. Congratulations, Lily. Also like to talk a little bit about the band program. Congratulations to Mari Cortez with the flute and Tyler Ernest with the clarinet. They have auditioned and have been accepted in the state honors band. This is Mari's third time being accepted in the program, and this is Tyler's first time. Waukesha North Dance Team, come on up. They qualified for the WACPC State in both the D-two hip-hop and D-three Palm for the fourth year in a row. At state, they placed seventh out of eleven teams. They missed a top-five finish by point three. They placed third in D-two hip-hop out of eleven teams, and they medaled for the second year in a row. They traveled to Orlando for the national competition in February. Both hip-hop routines placed sixth in the nation, and the Palm's routine placed third. The teams brought home with them the contest, or the Contest of Champion National Trophy for the first time, and it's sitting in my office, if you'd like to come and see it. So congratulations to our Palm school. A shout-out to our girls bowling team on their performance at state. On the first day, the girls bowled fifteen games, which came out to be two thousand five hundred and thirty pins with an average of a hundred and sixty-eight point six seven. If only I could do that. This put them in the second seed spot for the finals. On the second day, they bowled two games against Merrill Tomahawk, and they ended up taking second, missing the gold pin, missing the gold by one pin. They brought home the silver at the state bowling contest this year. Another group I want to talk about is the twenty-three, twenty-four North Wrestling Highlights. Again, this program has been just getting better and better every year. We had eight sectional qualifiers for the most in the last five years. We have five girl wrestlers in the inaugural year of Girls Wrestling Program at North High School. Our state qualifiers were Aiden Schlieb, a ninth grader at a hundred and twenty pounds. We had Ben Lauer, a sophomore, a two-time qualifier at a hundred and forty-four pounds. We had Aiden Zerbal, a senior, as a two-time qualifier at a hundred and fifty. Aiden went on to place third at state. North's first state place since two thousand and seven. So I think that deserves a round of applause. Brody, come on up. Brody was part of our boys swim program this year, and Brody was one of our co-captains of the team as a sophomore swimmer. He was a dedicated and a hard-working athlete, his biggest accomplishment was a PR at the Classic Eight Conference Meet in February in the two-hundred freestyle by seven point oh seven seconds. So he made up a PR of seven, and that's a lot of time, and seven seconds making up. So congratulations, Brody. And that is it for Waukesha North High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mick. And last, but certainly not least, we're going to represent, we're going to actually recognize, I should say, Waukesha West, and up to do that is going to be Principal Mr. Ryan Pat. So thank you for joining us, Mr. Pat.
Yes, thank you for having me. We'll get this show going, and we'll start off with gymnastics.
Hi, thanks for having us today. I'm Nicole Zerath, and I'm one of the gymnastics coaches, and I am here to honor Kalen Braun. Kalen is a sophomore, and last season, she had a state contending season as a freshman, injured, ending in injury. So a little unfortunate, but she came back fierce. Kalen has dedication to the sport of gymnastics that would match most professional athletes. Her focus, her leadership in the gym, and her confidence has grown exponential this year. She qualified on one of the most unforgiving events in gymnastics, the balance beam, where she ended up placing in the top eleven behind eight seniors. So we are very excited to see what the future has for Kalen and very proud of her accomplishments at this time.
And Coach Ally Loman is going to talk about cheer.
Hi, thank you for having us today. With me, I also have freshman Raina and senior Jenna to help represent Waukesha West Cheer. This year, they had an amazing winter. They competed all season in two divisions, the traditional small and game-day small divisions. Their game-day small division ended up placing top three at every single competition through the season and booked a ticket to state by placing second out of thirteen at the prelims event. At the state finals, we were super proud of junior Caitlin Kraus for being recognized as part of the limited tumble All-State Team, as well as the game-day small team placing second overall. This has been quite a while for us to bring back a trophy in a stunt division, so we're super proud of them.
And next, we'll bring up our dance team.
Hi there. I'm the head coach, Lisa Ann Ludkey. This is my assistant, Michaela Welch, and we're super proud to represent our athletes today, who unfortunately couldn't be here. We got a lot of multi-sport athletes. But we're so proud to report that the Waukesha West Dance Team successfully navigated another long season during our summer competitive. Our seniors did a first in school history, and they took home first place in the Senior Kick Line Division the first year that they competed, and the team also took home the Sportsmanship Award at our camp competition. Over the winter season, we were really proud to qualify for state at the regional level for the ninth consecutive year. We did have five seniors, so all five of our senior athletes did compete at the regional level, and then three, Elena Franz, Peyton Groff, and Megan Wozniak, did qualify for finals for All-State. We did also take home a first with the small group, and we had our small group comprised of four sophomores, so super excited about the future there. So sophomores Michaela Heinert, Elka Lenowski, Nora Reed, and Adeline Schwind took home that, so we're super proud to continue the traditions of Waukesha West.
All right. We'll keep going with some other clubs, activities, and athletic things that happened at West. For DECA, start off by mentioning some names of our state qualifiers. We had Adriana Rivera, Ananya Srinivas, Ava Kleist, Charlie Hackel, Ellis Gogman, Finley O'Connor, Harper Pew, Julia Camp, Mayor Gruber, Mason Johnson, Megan Thompson, Mega Morya, Miles Folsman, Quaid Ibarra, Sophia Antheline, Tyler Tinder, and Valeria Hernandez, the individuals who qualified for state. Going a little bit deeper, some of the awards that we received, some series finalists were Ananya Srinivas, Ellis Gogman, Harper Pew, Julie Camp, Quaid Ibarra, Sophia Antheline, and Valeria Hernandez. In the top ten of our event was Mega Morya, some of the number-one DECA state awards. So I don't know DECA that well, so if anybody is listening out there and I'm not doing it correctly, correct me after the fact, and I will make a retraction. I'm going to read this as Waukesha West Local Chapter were state champions in these areas at the state competition. Wisconsin Acts of Kindness, state champions. DECA General Contributions to Charity, state champions. Waukesha West, Hundred Hours of Service, state champion. Waukesha West. Wisconsin DECA Service Fest, state champion. Waukesha West. And a special shout-out to Thirty-Five Years of Service to our DECA advisor, Mrs. Carol Dallas, who's been a longtime business teacher and received the recognition she deserved at the DECA State Competition this year. DECA Membership Campaign, state champions. Waukesha West. Community Awareness Project, fourth place was Harper Pew for presentation. Gold Chapter Award, state champion. Waukesha West. Marketing Management Team Decision-Making Series Finalist was Ananya Srinivas in Role Play Two. Buying and Merchandising Team Decision-Making was Series Finalist Ellis Gogman, Role Play One. Apparel and Accessories Marketing Series Individual Series, Series Finalist Harper Pew, Role Play Two. Buying and Merchandising Team Decision-Making Series Finalist Julie Camp, Role Play One. Apparel and Accessories Marketing Series Top Ten, as I said, Mega Morya. Examiner, Role Play Two. Marketing Management Team Decision-Making Series Finalist Quaid Ibarra, Role Play One. Marketing Management Team Decision-Making Series Finalist Sophia Antheline, Role Play Two. Marketing Management Team Decision-Making Series Finalist Valeria Hernandez, Role Play One. And finally, representing Waukesha West HS at the DECA International Development Conference in Anaheim, California, later in April, will be Harper Pew and Mega Morya. Thank you for bearing with me on that. Moving on to bowling. Our West Bowling Club enjoyed a lot of success this year. The Varsity Boys advanced to state for the first time in ten years, a huge accomplishment since restarting the program three years ago. They ended up taking third out of twenty-six total teams that qualified for state. Congratulations to Logan Lauterbach, who qualified as an individual for the state tournament. The club has grown from thirteen bowlers on two teams, Varsity Boys and Girls, in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two season, to twenty-five bowlers on four teams, Varsity Boys, Varsity Girls, and two JV Boys this season. Academic Decathlon, the twenty-three, twenty-four competition season for our Academic Decathlon Team was a great success. Once again, West Academic Decathlon alumni Brady Chyla served as the team's math coach. Team members Sophie Fluckiger, Alexis Dinwiddie, Nathan Maski, Ava Schumacher, Jeremiah Cojon Ketti, Jack Smith, Mina Estrada, Luke Dables, and Ellie Aguilera earned multiple ribbons and medals throughout the season, which included eighteen ribbons and third place at January's regional competition, and six medals and second place in Division One at March's state competition. The team also secured the third-place trophy for the Super Quiz Relay event at state. Sophie Fluckiger was the team's top scholar or high scorer at the state event. And Alexis Dinwiddie earned a gold medal with her perfect speech, prepared and impromptu score. Jeremiah Cojon Ketti, Luke Dables, and Mina Estrada also won medals at the highly competitive state event. Moving into powerlifting. In our third year as an activity, we continue to provide safe and unique opportunities for those athletes that want to lift heavy weights. We are a co-op with Waukesha West and North and compete in the local high school powerlifting meets, which are run by the WHSPA. We have twenty-five lifters on our team that compete in local regional meets and qualified a program record. Eight athletes for the state this year. All lifters did amazing at state and many hit new PRs. Eight state qualifying lifters were Jayla Williams, sophomore at West, Sophie Jean, senior at West, Mackenzie Minster, senior at West, Christina Gabrisch, senior at West, Morgan Washington, sophomore at West, Avin Minster, junior at North, Gavin Armstrong, senior at North, Jackson Jones, sophomore at West. The top West-North lifter was Jackson Jones, who finished third in state and hit three new national and four state records. Jackson Jones's record-breaking date at state, back squat was five hundred and twenty-four pounds, which was a new national record. Bench press, three hundred and fifteen, new state record. Deadlift, five hundred and thirty-five pounds, new national record, with a total combined of those three lifts, thirteen seventy-four, one thousand three hundred and seventy-four pounds, a new national record. All right. Moving on to ski races. Ski racing season in Wisconsin has a very short span, yet is very competitive sport, and it's especially so in the Milwaukee Area Conference. In the Milwaukee Area High School Ski Conference, only the top twelve of twenty-five Milwaukee Area teams for both boys and girls qualified to attend the state meet in mid-February in La Crosse, Wisconsin. The Waukesha School District has supported a team of girls and boys, student athletes, to compete in ski racing for well over thirty years. Both our girls' and boys' teams work hard in the short season on local area ski hills, cold weather permitting, and even begin with some dry land training prior to the ski hills opening. In our most recent few years, our girls' team has come very close to qualifying with this year's season-end results of their regular conference finish of fourteenth place, just one to two positions shy of qualifying for state this year. For the boys' team, over the past six years, our boys' team have qualified for state either as a team of six to seven athletes or as an individual qualifiers competing at the state meet. This year, our boys, our team of seven boys qualified by finishing in sixth of twenty-five area teams. The boys competed at state with good results, finishing thirteenth place overall for all competing twenty-two state qualifying teams and finishing tenth position in their respective and tough Division One. Some notable highlights of their overall combined three races' results were Connor Boyle, South, who goes to South with an overall finished eighteenth place, Jonas Seibert from West in thirty-third place, Finn Seibert in eighty-eighth place, Ian Robert from West in ninety-fifth place, and rounding out the team were Carson Gordon in a hundred and twenty-sixth place, Brandon Schatzman from South with a hundred and fifty-second place, and Anping Engstrom from West in a hundred and sixtieth place. In adding, on behalf of the Waukesha High School Alpine Ski Racing Team, we would like to say a big thank you to the Waukesha School Board and the Waukesha School District and to all our Waukesha High Schools and athletic directors and administrations for supporting our ski team and all of our student athletes in their pursuit of excellence in their academics and in their athletics. The journey to qualify for the state competition is not an easy road, yet, once qualified, we could not have competed up in La Crosse without the mutual support of the district and all the administration. So a big thank you from then. Moving on to Model UN. The Model UN Nations Club competed in five conferences this year. The highlight was hosting our own regional conference, in which six area schools participated and over one hundred students attended. Sessions were chaired by West students who built upon their communication skills and parliamentary procedure acumen. This club is comprised of an amazing group of students. They research and write position papers for fun outside of school. Then they engage in complex conversation with students from around the state to solve real-world problems. They have to collaborate with other countries that do not share their same viewpoint and work to pass resolutions. Students who join this club build their research, reading, writing, and communication skills while also portraying the unique perspectives of countries around the world and solving complex issues facing the world today. These are the future citizens we hope to see in all of our students. Moving on to wrestling. I'm almost there. The Waukesha West Wrestling Team had one of its most successful seasons in school history. The team became back-to-back WIAA Regional Champs, making it all the way to the WIAA Team Sectional Finals, falling short by one match of returning to the team-state tournament. The wrestling team also won the twelve-team Nicolay Scramble, twenty-team Rippen Scramble, and placed third in the thirty-team Highlander Invite. Individually, we had three conference champions in Trevor Moss, Isaiah Guerrero, and Elliot Malloy. The team was able to have a program-record nine individual state qualifiers, which was the highest team total in the entire state of Wisconsin. the highest team total in the entire state of Wisconsin. The individual qualifiers were Brian Rivera, Torun Kukainen, Trevor Moss, Tier Colquet, Xander Kukainen, Isaiah Guerrero, Jackson Lawrence, Will Blaskowski, and Elliot Malloy. The program hit 50 student athletes this past season, which shows that the program is not going away anytime soon and is making its mark as a premier program in southeastern Wisconsin. And finally, recognition for boy swim. Freshman Ryan Warner placed at the state meet and has also already broken West High School swimming records. We look to see big things for Ryan as he's only a freshman. Thank you.
Wow. Well, I just want to say that, thank you. That was absolutely amazing. Every time we do this, it seems like we have more and more to celebrate. It's really quite impressive. So I just want to say thank you to all of you that joined us this evening. Thanks for making time, and certainly turn it over to Dr. Piasik.
Yeah, thank you. There's just a good reminder, there's so many things, and there's so much time that you all spend outside of school. And for every team, there's at least one coach, and in some cases, there's more than one coach. So just a huge thanks to all the staff and outside coaches and parents and everybody who's making all of this happen. Since I know we have a lot of our dance and cheer teams in the audience tonight, I'm going to kind of just make one comment about all of you, because having been to a lot of sports events over the last several years, any loss of revenue in the concession stands are likely to be your fault, because you guys are so good. It's really hard to leave the gym or to leave the field when you're performing, so thank you for just being so good at what you do. I think one of my favorite moments of this year, well, there were several, but the inter-district events where we have multiple cheer teams or multiple groups that are represented, it's just so neat to see all of you in one place and how good you are. So really appreciate the time and effort that you all put in to perfect your arts and your skill and your sport and your trade. So as a parent, it's not lost on me how much that takes for you students, but also, you know, thank your parents tonight or when you get home or whatever for getting you to all those places. Is there, does anyone else have a question or a comment or want to acknowledge anything that we heard tonight, other than the fact that Mr. Pat, I think, should be a radio announcer? Anybody? All right. Oh, Mrs. Kanek, yeah.
Well, just like you, I mean, I'm just, you know, my mind is blown with the talent that we have in this district with our students and our staff and our parents. Our community is just, it's incredible. So I'm, you know, every time, I look so forward to these, and I can't make everything, but I just love hearing what's going on in this community and our, in our school district. You guys are amazing. Truly amazing. So proud.
Make us proud, for sure. All right, well, thank you all very much for being here, and thank you to our A.D.s and principals as well. Thank you. All right, moving on, we're moving to our Student Representative Report, and tonight we also have Assistant Principal Emily McHugh from East to introduce our Student Representative, Madeline Klausmeyer. We'll just give a sec for everybody to make their way out.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Ryan Pat's a little bit taller than I am. Just to clarify, I'm from E-Achieve, not East. That's okay. And I am here to introduce Madeline Klausmeyer. She is a ninth-grade student that has been with E-Achieve since, in seventh grade. And can you hear us, Madeline?
Yeah, I can hear everyone.
Perfect, and we can hear you, so that's wonderful. So I'm going to turn it over to Madeline, and she's going to share a little bit about what's been happening since the last time she talked to you guys, I believe in January.
Well, okay. Well, thank you for having me back. My name is Madeline Klausmeyer. I'm a ninth-grade student at E-Achieve Academy. In January, I talked to the board about what it's like to be a virtual student at E-Achieve. Today, I have many exciting updates and activities to share. The E-Achieve Student Council is holding several activities in the upcoming months. First, we are holding a fundraiser for the Wisconsin Humane Society. So far, we have raised $150 in the first month. Along with the fundraiser, we are also hosting a virtual pet parade, where E-Achieve students are encouraged to submit photos of their pets to be featured in a presentation. On April 30th, we are hosting a virtual talent show, and on May 22nd, we are also hosting eight games of bingo. Winners will receive prizes like special ribbons and gift cards. Our publication club is currently working on its second issue. The first issue was a huge success with over 75 pages of content submitted by students and staff. In this issue, we will be showing the graduating seniors at E-Achieve, along with many other things, like student writing and school outings. Peer tutoring is a new group that was formed at the end of first semester. E-Achieve students can reach out to peer tutors to get help on assignments. Our first meeting was last week. We had many students sign up and had lots of productive discussion. I would like to give a special thanks to Mrs. Rocky, who helped form this club and continues to support this club. I continue to enjoy learning through E-Achieve and participating in all of my classes and clubs. I have wonderful teachers who are helping me on my journey, including my new Spanish III teacher, Senora Lozineki, who took over our class at the start of second semester. She provides timely grading and feedback that helps me grow as a student. Another teacher that has helped me at E-Achieve is Mrs. Rocky, my honors English IX teacher, who provides constructive feedback and encouragement. She's also been a great advisor for our peer tutoring group. I look forward to a strong finish for my freshman year and can't wait to see what my sophomore year E-Achieve will bring.
So very well spoken. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Madeline? Did we lose her?
Oh. Madeline, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still there.
Okay, good. Mrs. Kanek?
I just have a question. Madeline, how did you become such an eloquent, confident speaker as you are? I mean, what are your tricks and where have you learned that skill?
It's probably because I've had a lot of experience. I've participated in a lot of clubs at E-Achieve. Like, I'm the Student Council President, so every single month I have to talk to a big group of students and have to answer questions and all of that, and I've presented at meetings and stuff like that. So I think I've gotten used to it.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Hi, Madeline. Again, as my colleagues say, you are very well, well, very good public speaker, very well spoken. And so, with that being said, is there any, and I can already tell you, you demonstrate lots of leadership skills just by your presentation. Is there anything, any specific career that you would like to go into that during your time at E-Achieve, you kind of took a look at and want to go in that direction?
I'd probably say I want to become like some type of professor, because I like talking to loud crowds of people and educating them.
Well, you have, you have several people on this board who are teachers, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And I can definitely see you doing that. Again, you're a very well spoken leader and very good at public speaking, so thank you for your time.
All right, well, thank you so much, Madeline, for being with us tonight.
Thanks, Madeline.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye. Thank you all. Have a great rest of the night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now at the point of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have two speakers tonight. Because there are less than six speakers, speakers will be notified at three minutes, but allowed up to five minutes to complete their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used in the area behind the speaker and podium will be cleared during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight will be Eric Eggers.
As we all know, last month, the ex-group Libs of TikTok targeted Butler's Assistant Principal Jeffrey Tagi for his comments on so-called parental rights and for his sexuality. The bigoted, accusatory comments on the post were nothing short of vile and disgusting, and multiple bomb threats were made against him and the school. And although the threats were not determined to be credible, this was still an act of terrorism worthy of the swiftest condemnation. And yet, weeks later, we still have yet to hear an appropriate public response from this board and administration, one that explicitly condemns these actions and demonstrates support for Mr. Tagi and any staff so targeted for any reason. If they know you truly stand by them, they're more likely to stick around. So to help with this proper response, may I suggest starting with something along the lines of the following from a letter sent out on March 21st to the staff of the Wauwatosa School District. You may have viewed unfortunate developments in the news regarding neighboring districts, specifically targeted and discriminatory behavior against LGBTQIA+ staff, which have resulted in threats to staff members and the school community as a whole. These behaviors are, quite frankly, disgusting, illegal, and unacceptable. We are so proud of our Wauwatosa School District community, where we do not accept, condone, or tolerate any words or actions of a discriminatory or hateful nature. We have great pride in our growing diversity and what each unique individual contributes to the collective. Furthermore, we know the unique struggles many marginalized and underserved groups of individuals face, which further exacerbate the impact of these types of unacceptable actions. For our friends and allies of the LGBTQIA+ community, we stand with you, and we are committed to ensuring a work environment that maintains your physical, psychological, and social safety. If you experience acts of targeted hate or discrimination, please reach out to your supervisor, who will work with us to ensure it is promptly and properly investigated and addressed. It's really not that hard. We continue to wait and watch.
Our next speaker tonight is Stephen Coxwell.
Hi. I just want to talk a little bit about why parents are concerned about gender theory and queer theory affecting specifically vulnerable populations of students, specifically special-needs, autistic, and LGBT students. That's LGBT by a traditional definition, not by gender theory or queer theory definitions. I think the leadership should probably be familiar with how a lot of the autistic children come into the district, how they're trained from the time they're two or three, all the way through to when they come into school. Most go through something called ABA therapy or Lion Therapy. It's the most effective, most popular treatment that autistic kids get in this area. What they do is they take advantage of the routine-building nature of autistic children. We start very small, let's say it's to teach them to brush their teeth. We get them to touch it to their teeth, and we tell them, "Good job." Maybe a couple, the next day, we tell them for one second, and we tell them, "Good job." Two seconds until we build up. We slowly and slowly normalize something that they don't like, or that is not their routine, or they are resistant to, or is not normal to them, and day after day, after a few repetitions, maybe 10, maybe 20, it now becomes normal to that child. So we literally groom them to groom themselves. We literally normalize what we want normal, because we're the parents. And so that's a big reason why they're very vulnerable to the gender theory and queer theory. So when something happens, like there's double-digit days where the bus company sends someone, a man presenting himself as a woman on a bus with elementary-age autistic children, that's exactly what parents are talking about when they talk about their concern with grooming children into gender and queer theory. We're slowly, you're slowly introducing something to a child who, six, seven-years-old autistic, can tell that a man is presenting himself as a woman, wearing women's clothes, and now that, you all saw that that has done for double-digit days, that's twice a day, so now these autistic children have had 20 repetitions of this plus in a row, and now they come home, and that's, that's normal to them. It doesn't take more than two or three repetitions for autistic children to now have something as normal, now have something as a new routine to them. That's why the majority of children who experience gender dysphoria and go through transition and then detransition turn out to just be autistic, and they were misled when they were a child. The other group I would mention is the LGBT students, because most children who experience gender dysphoria don't go through physical transition, but then later grow out of the gender dysphoria, realizes because they're just LGBT, the traditional version of LGBT, not the one that people throw in by saying LGBTQ and change the definition using queer gender theory and queer theory. So the idea that you guys have passed a resolution, all saying that, you know, with these things happening, you guys will make, that leadership is required to notify parents, you guys all saw that happen and let them hide it from us. You guys may have done something in secret to do something about whether it's done in the future, but we've gotten no notifications. You guys have seen leadership at the bus company and in the district repeatedly refuse to do it. Why? Why would we trust anything that's in this parental rights resolution when all you guys have seen it not be followed and are okay with it? You're not directing them to notify parents. Is this something to where you guys think this isn't gender theory or queer theory? A man presenting himself as a woman, and then the person who hires the people at the bus company telling me that, well, I'm assuming his gender by asking questions on whether they can have, whether they have a separate dress code for men and women? It's obvious gender theory and queer theory. The idea, it makes us feel like, makes me feel like you guys are just treating us like we're idiots, like we don't know anything. Like, you can just say some stuff like, "Oh, our lawyer said it's illegal." I didn't vote on that lawyer. Lawyers can say one thing, and I can find another lawyer that'll say the opposite. That doesn't, that doesn't satisfy parents when we ask questions and have the leadership completely refuse to answer our questions. They're relevant. They're very relevant. And the idea that they can just pretend that it's not gender theory, queer theory, or maybe it is, but the federal government, state government decide that, hey, that's illegal, we can't even notify parents, that's ridiculous. We have a separation of powers in this country for a reason. We expect the federal government and state government to overreach. That's why there's a separation of powers. There should always be something we're fighting against. If it's the opinion of this district, that federal and state governments say it's illegal to notify parents that there's grooming happening by a man presenting himself as a woman, 10-plus days in a row to elementary-age autistic children, what are we doing? You guys have all taken responsibility of our local government, which it's your job to fight against that. It's your job to fight against federal and state government overreach, telling us that we have to entertain not only gender theory and queer theory, which are inseparable from pedophilia, but we have to hide it from parents? It's illegal to notify parents? That's unacceptable. That's crazy. I don't accept that, and it feels like you're just treating us like idiots when you give us those excuses.
All right, we're moving into our minutes approval for tonight. We have two sets of minutes for your consideration, the March 13th Regular Board Meeting and the March 13th Executive Session. Mrs. White?
I still move. Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Kanek. Any further discussion? Okay, Mrs. Edding, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Kanek?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Mark Kelmore?
Aye.
Carrie Kazlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. Moving on to our WEF report, Mr. Barowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. The WEF Board last met last Thursday, April 4th, and I think you all know by now what tomorrow is, the Evening for Education, the largest fundraiser of the year for the Waukesha Education Foundation. If you are worrying about what to wear, I'm assuming we all have a decent pair of jeans at home, so you can wear that, since the theme is denim and diamonds, so just wear some jeans, dress them up, and we'll see you tomorrow. Couple of things to note. We are taking both cash and credit card, or debit card, I guess, will be accepted tomorrow at the Ballroom Bars. So let's cover the most important information first. There'll be two cash bars and one that accepts cards. So in the first hour, there is complimentary beer, wine, and soda, but then after that, it'll be pay either cash or card. And there is also a signature drink called Forever in Blue Dreams, available at a cash price, and part of the price for that drink ends up being a donation back to WEF, so you can drink what you want, but if I'd accept... So you can drink what you want, but if I'd accept, encourage anything, it would be to at least try one of the Forever in Blue Dreams. And then also, don't forget to follow the lengthy email directions that we all got about registering for Handbid ahead of time. So that'll just make the check-in a lot easier tomorrow if we register for Handbid, which is for the auction, and really, any donations tomorrow can be made on Handbid as well. All right, couple other items in different areas. The WEF scholarship, or held scholarship evaluators, have been busy looking at applications, and all decisions are due by April 18th, so expect those shortly. The grant window is now closed, and as I mentioned last month, we're offering a record-breaking $55,000 in grants. Applications are also up this year. They're up to 65 applications, so that was good to see as well. Grant Committee is going to be reviewing those applications against the rubric, and we'll meet in just a few weeks to discuss all of those. And winners will be announced in May on a surprise date where WEF just shows up at school and awards those grants. So that'll be, that'll be fun. Next is our golf outing on August 1st. You know, we really didn't have much else going on, so we thought we'd open registration for golf as well. So that is now open. And you can visit wefgolf.givesmart.com in order to register, or maybe make it a little bit easier, you can text WEGG golf, excuse me, WEFGolf to 76278. You do have a couple of flyers at your desk. One of them lists all the sponsorships, and there's still a few out there that we'd like to fill. It was just updated this morning, but of course, the website always has the most updated information because I think just today, we filled a sponsorship or two. So don't necessarily go off the flyer, go off of what's on the website. We're also using a new platform on this event, so we're transitioning to GiveSmart. So we'll be curious of your feedback on how you like using that. And then lastly, for June, is our Partners in Education reception. If you don't recall, that's just a short networking event that celebrates our scholarship winners, our donors, and our sponsors, as well as really all of our partners in education in the district. That's going to be on June 12th at Carroll University. It's a free event, of course. All you need to do is RSVP, and you should be receiving an invite the end of April. So it happens to be on Wednesday, June 12th, which is also a board meeting evening. It does start earlier at 4:30, so hopefully you can pop in there before you come to the board meeting. And I think that's all I've got, unless you've got questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burowski. Okay, we're moving on to our consent agenda. Mr. Clark, would you present the gift, please?
Yeah, Waukesha West received $500 from an anonymous donor to be used for the senior class end-of-year activities and projects.
Thank you. Your agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity in moment. There were no expulsions. There are three policies for your consideration. Policy 7440, Facility Security. Policy 7440.01, Video Surveillance and Electronic Monitoring, and Policy 8310, Public Records. Does anyone wish to have any items set aside? All right, Mr. Burowski, would you please present the consent agenda for approval?
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. Early this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved five resignations. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desks. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Wad. Any further discussion? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine-zero. Next is the superintendent's report, Dr. Seabert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. I'll begin quickly this evening with my monthly overnight field trip report. I appreciate Stacy helping me put this together. Very short, both North and South will be going to the Boys Golf Sheboygan Invite in April of 2024. North High School will also be going on a Class of 2026 College Tour in February of '25 with visits to UW Lacrosse, Stevens Point, Stout, and the University of Minnesota. And then Waukesha West will be attending a Varsity Cheer Camp in the Wisconsin Dells in July of 2024. And then, just secondly, really quickly, it's kind of amazing, as I was looking at the calendar, there is only one more regular board meeting before the end of the school year, which means we are flying through the school year. The weather is finally starting to get a little bit better, better. And I just want to say thank you to all of our, we had some great examples tonight, all of our students, all of our staff, all of our administration, and all of our families for their, all their efforts in making the school year successful. And let's see if we can maximize these final two months that we have in this school year. And you also had the graduation sign-up going around the table, which signals again that we're getting close to the end. So it's been a great year, and we'll keep it rolling. So thank you, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you, Dr. Seabert. All right, we're moving into our committee reports now. We'll begin this evening with our Teaching and Learning Committee, which will be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
All right, thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Thursday, April 4th, 2024. Tonight's agenda includes four action items and one discussion item. Our first action item is Board Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. With the passage of Act 60 by the Wisconsin State Legislature, beginning with the graduating class of 2028, which is next year's incoming freshman, all students will be required to take a standalone financial literacy course for graduation. Because of that change, there will need to be a change in Board Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. The revisions to the policy included a chart to show this graduation requirement, starting with the class of 2028. There was a request to also consider a change to the wording as it relates to Note C regarding the math credit requirement. This item was discussed and then tabled at our meeting last week, as there are some additional wording changes we'd like to address. We will therefore bring this policy back to our May Teaching and Learning Committee meeting and there, and are not seeking board action at this time tonight. When it does return to the full board for action, it will be placed in the consent agenda, unless there is any interest in discussing it further. All right, next action item was taken to, action was taken to recommend the K-5 Reading Curriculum. In May 2020, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved Benchmark Phonics for a six-year agreement. In June of 2022, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved Benchmark Writers Workshop for a six-year agreement. The curriculum review process was scheduled to take place for reading in the fall of 2024. However, based on SDW's Study of Science-Aligned Literacy Practices, Teacher Feedback, Requirements of Act 20, and to increase the trajectory of student achievement, the Literacy Curriculum Review began this past fall, 2023. Under Act 20, the following nine areas must be explicitly and systematically addressed: phonological awareness, phonics, building background knowledge, oral language development, vocabulary building, writing instruction, comprehension instruction, and reading fluency. The SDW Literacy Team researched and reviewed five curricular resources in December, which were narrowed to three resources for further evaluation in February and March. The team also conducted visits to other districts to see the three resources in use. In March, they held vendor presentations for each of the three curricular resources with evaluation from 26 directors, principals, school psychologists, literacy coaches, and EL teacher leaders, and additional evaluation by 51 teachers, which included monolingual, dual-language, and special education teachers. The overwhelming recommendation for the Benchmark was for the Benchmark Advanced Adelante Program. Some of the highlights of the Benchmark product include: materials in English and Spanish, 10 three-week units, knowledge-building curriculum, explicit science-aligned instruction, both formative and summative assessments, practice for standardized assessments for reading, writing, phonics, and grammar, available parent resources for home connections and support. The six-year quote for this purchase can be found in Board Docs. Included in the cost are: English teacher materials for K-5 monolingual, Spanish teacher materials for K-1 dual, Spanish and English teacher materials for grades 2 through 5 dual-language teachers, six years of digital access, six years of consumable student materials, 13 professional development days with Benchmark consultants. Benchmark provided a significant credit to our overall cost due to the previous Benchmark Phonics and Writing purchases, along with the discount for shipping costs. Funding sources for this resource purchase will be a combination of district, teaching and learning, and ESSER funds. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved Benchmark Advanced Adelante for grades K-5 reading curriculum as presented. The committee requests board approval, and I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kazlowski. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Wad.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to really congratulate all the people that were involved in, in the evaluation of the different potential platforms, the process that was used to get, to get there. I've watched very closely the Teaching and Learning Committee's meetings on this topic, and could not be more impressed, first of all, with the thoroughness of the evaluation, how much feedback was taken broadly across all the people who have a stake in the success of our literacy program going forward, as well as very careful financial considerations. Clearly, very good negotiating was done to ensure that this was, you know, you know, I don't know if budget-friendly is the correct word. I know it's an expensive program, but I know that there are other ways that we could have gone that would have been much more expensive and would have been much more taxing on our staff as well. So just congratulations to all the people that were involved, and the feedback that was relayed to the Teaching and Learning Committee from, I think it was over 60 staff members who reviewed it, with the overwhelming support for that tool, I think speaks as well to the quality of the literacy program. And I'm just excited, as a board member, to be a part of voting to adopt it and looking forward to the difference it's going to make in the lives of all of our young learners today and going forward. So thank you to everyone that was involved in that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine-zero. Congrats.
Okay, our next action was to approve the High School Social Studies Resource for Government. As High School Social Studies proceeds through the curriculum design cycle, curriculum materials for the government courses are needed to support the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This course is required for graduation, and currently, there are no district-supported resources. This recommendation is based on the data and information provided during the second phase of the curriculum design cycle as presented at the March 2024 Teaching and Learning Board Meeting. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the recommended resource for the High School Social Studies Government Course, American Government Stories of a Nation, as presented. The committee requests board approval, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Kazlowski. Any questions? This is a book we've seen before. I'm not seeing any. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine-zero. Great.
Okay, our fourth action taken, was taken to approve the High School Social Studies Resources, Resource for Economics. As High School Social Studies proceeds through the curriculum design cycle, Economics is seeking a curricular resource to support the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This course is required for graduation, and currently, there are no district-supported resources. This recommendation is based on the data and information provided during the second phase of the curriculum design cycle as presented at the March 2024 Teaching and Learning Board Meeting. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the recommended resource for the High School Social Studies Course, Economics, it is called McGraw-Hill Economics, as presented. The committee requests board approval, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any questions or discussion? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine-zero.
Okay, well, you've been so busy, I'm so excited about this. Okay, our discussion item for this evening is a K-4 update. This was really fun. The purpose of this report was to provide information around SDW's 4K program. The history of 4K in SDW, the 4K programming, and the collaboration of the 4K program between SDW sites, our community partners, and the 4K team were all highlighted. The instructional model and resources, family engagement, assessment, and collaboration with the 4K program was also shared. It was such a wonderful overview of the exceptional program our 4K staff provides for our SDW families, and we look forward to seeing this program in action. Madam President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mrs. White.
I was going to make a comment, if I could, before you, before you close. I was so impressed with the presentation on 4K, and I've had the privilege of having two of my grandkids go through that program, and it's amazing. And the way we work with our community partner, partners in Waukesha, I just realized also, after looking at some of the legislative initiatives that are going to come back up again next year, that there are many programs across, many school districts across the state that don't even have 4K, that we're really a trendsetter in having this program and the amazing program we have, which I think is such a great foundational skill for teaching literacy for all of our kids.
Thank you. All right, our next committee, maybe in great form, is our Student Services Committee. Mr. McCaffrey, would you like to have any?
Thank you, Madam President. We have no report this evening, as we did not meet in April. So bittersweet, for sure.
Well, thank you for the update, and since all attention seems to be on you at this moment, I do just want to acknowledge that you've been the leader.
You're the highlight of attention.
Leader for our Student Services Committee for the last two years since its inception, and greatly appreciate everything you've done for that. And so, short and sweet report, but we will continue on.
Thank you very much.
Legacy. Thank you so much for your service to the board.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our Human Resources and Compensation Committee. Mr. Burowski, back.
All right. Yep, thank you, Mrs. President. We did have two items for approval this evening. The first one is the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of principal at Hawthorne Elementary School. The administration is recommending Marlon Figueroa for the position of principal at Hawthorne Elementary School. Ms. Figueroa is a strong instructional leader with a sense of urgency. She has high expectations for students and staff, and values the collaboration within the school district of Waukesha. She has strong communication skills, with experiences of working with students at the elementary and middle school level. Ms. Figueroa demonstrates a growth mindset and has a student-centered approach. She's well-organized, well-organized, uses data to inform professional development and other school-based decisions, and partners with parents to engage them within the school community. Marlon Figueroa is currently the school district principal at, excuse me, the school principal at St. Joseph Academy in Milwaukee. She is also an adjunct instructor at Carroll University. Ms. Figueroa worked in the school district of Waukesha as a teacher-coach, ESL teacher leader, and bilingual elementary teacher from 2012 to 2023. She received her Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Carroll University, and her Master's Degree in Curriculum and Instruction from UW Whitewater. Ms. Figueroa's Bachelors of Elementary Education, ESL, and bilingual certifications are from UW-Oshkosh. Her resume was provided in Board Docs, salary and benefits are according to mill management policies. Madam President, I move to approve the recommendation of Marlon Figueroa for the position of principal at Hawthorne Elementary School.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Voight, thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Moore?
Just wanted to again say, we're in for a treat with Mrs. Figueroa. I might have the privilege of working with her in the Diocese of Mo, Archdiocese of Milwaukee, and the Catholic schools of Milwaukee, so you are in good hands, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Mark Kelmore?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes nine zero, and welcome back to the school district of Waukesha.
Yes. All righty, the next approval item was the approval of compensation for hourly and
non-unit employees. So this evening, the HR Compensation Committee approved on a vote of five to zero, the compensation for hourly and non-unit employees. There was a packet of information placed at your, at your desk. It, I think, looks like this, in case you need to locate it, and I just thought Mr. Clark and Ms. Thede could perhaps present some of the information or summarize it for us.
Gladly. I'll kick it over to Mr. Clark.
Sure. The groups included in tonight's agenda item include the clerical, educational assistants, custodial maintenance crew, and our, our non-unit managers. And unlike the teachers group, there is no CPI threshold or other, other restrictions related to this staff. The adjustments before you tonight for the clerical staff calls on an average hourly rate increase on the south, on their scale of seventy-three cents. For the educational assistants, fifty-four cents. Custodial maintenance, seventy-eight cents. And then the non-unit managers are all salaried employees, so there is no hourly adjustment. But we are recommending a three-point-five percent average increase for that group. Some changes, and I think timely or due changes in the structure of the pay rates, calls for the addition in the clerical and educational assistants, a thirty cent per hour bilingual rate adjustment for staff that, through our bilingual department, will be tested and validate that they are proficient in both English and another language, and it applies to their job assignment. Bilingual used to be just a classroom that an aide would work in. It was a location rather than a, a skill and talent, but as our community continues to grow and change, we think this is a better way to approach that topic, moving forward both for clerical staff and aide staff. The teacher aide staff increase also, it's more focused on the special ed, aid assignments, because we, we've struggled, as we've talked about throughout much of COVID, or maybe all of COVID, looking back on, we've struggled to secure EENA applicants and people who have longevity with the district. And then with the custodial group, we are asking for a new column to be created, M-ten would be the, the code for licensed skilled trades employees, and these would be journeymen and master electrician and plumbers, or lead HVAC technicians. We've struggled, we have a strong skilled trades group down at the service building right now, but right now we have about half of our positions open, and we, we struggle to get even applicants at the old hourly rates. So the last page of your packet is the criteria for which someone would be needed to obtain, to be considered for M-ten. You'd also need to be hired into a job that calls for a license. So the new, new hourly rates are down below. So M-nine and M-ten, the difference is, M-nine would be painters, welders, and things like that, where M-ten would be strictly your, your licensed, state licensed staff, which for us would be about seven or eight people total. So that's included in their adjustment as well. And I, I thought I'd share the criteria, meaning that not everyone's just going to be all of a sudden slotted into column M-ten, it'd be a pretty select crew based on pretty stringent requirements. So that's a quick summary, and we're here to answer any questions. The pay ta, the actual pay tables are attached to your packet as well, so we can answer any questions you have related to this information.
Mr. Wad?
Darren, how many open positions do we have that would, that would be at the M-ten level? And if you stated that before, I'm sorry if I missed it.
It's three or four. I think we have four in place, and it's three openings, or, or vice versa.
Okay.
One now. One electrician.
Yeah, we're down to one electrician right now. Yep. And some of these spots have been open a year, year and a half, and truly no-
So these aren't new positions we would be creating, they're open positions, we're-
Correct.
-hoping this will help us fill by increasing the salary.
Correct.
Any other questions? Is there any change, Darren, to the minimum number of hours for each of these categories, like in terms of hitting these rates? It's my understanding that some part-time positions may have different rates, or is that?
Anyone in these job classifications are paid off of the same hourly rates. Perhaps what you're talking about is we get into some seasonal staff, or some specialty staff that aren't on here, but anyone who's considered a clerical or an educational, educational assistant all gets paid off the same scale. The differentiator is you have to work so many hours to become eligible for WRS, and that's the, that's the difference between them.
Sure, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Kozlowski?
And I, I do want to call out the, the discussion regarding the educational assistance. This has been a large issue, not only for the district of Waukesha, but for the state as it is, is to try, how can we be able to work and support hiring, retaining, managing their workloads and doing all of that? And so I thought the thought that went through that made sense, based on what we're seeing within being able to hire, retain, and take on the workloads that are increasing for those.
Thank you. Anything else? All right.
All right, Madam President, I move to approve the compensation for hourly and non-unit employees as presented.
Second? Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. Mrs. Ettinger, would you please take a roll call?
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Mark Kelmore?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes nine zero.
All right, and there were no discussion items, or information items this evening. Our next meeting's going to be Wednesday, May eighth, and, Madam President, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Our next committee report is the Policy and Government Relations Committee, presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The Policy and Government Relations Committee met on Monday, April eighth, here in the Board Room. And on the agenda this evening, there's three policy revisions that were approved at the committee meeting, and that were included in the consent agenda this evening. Those were seventy-four forty, facility security, seventy-four forty point oh one, video surveillance and electronic monitoring, eighty-three ten, which was public records. And our first action item was policy seventy-four forty point oh two, which was smart monitoring equipment. The committee reviewed the policy. It's a new policy intended to address emerging use of smart monitoring technology that is used to monitor for such things as vape, smoke, and other similar purposes. The committee voted to approve this addition of policy seventy-four forty point oh two, and I so move.
Second?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Mark Kelmore?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes nine zero.
We had three discussion information items, and the first was the Neola Update thirty-three number one, which was December of twenty-three. It consisted of twenty policies. Fourteen of those twenty are assigned to the Policy and Government Relations Committee, two to Teaching and Learning, two to Finance and Facilities, and two to Student Services.
Thank you.
Our second discussion information item was policy seventy-five forty point oh eight, which was Technology and Home Use, which had been changed to policy seventy-five forty point oh nine, in order to eliminate a duplicate policy number. This was simply a technical correction. Our third discussion item was Mr. Steve Schloomenhead provided an update on the Vicarta, I'm sorry, Verkata Security System, which included the various access levels for security cameras, doors, guest management, and sensors. Verkata implementation is a hundred percent complete at the elementary level, eighty percent at the high school level, and fifty percent at the middle school level. Finally, our Government Relations Information included a report by Dr. Seibert about the end of the session legislative updates. That legislative cycle generally is a good time to invite legislators to visit the district, and those will be scheduled in the near future, and then shared with board members. And that concludes my report. The next time we'll meet for Policy and Government Relations Committee will be on June tenth.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Moore?
I was meant to say this before, like Betty said, with Teaching and Learning, we have been busy in policy and government relations as well. So, yeah, we've been, it's been, it's been a heavy month for us, but I just wanted to make a statement, sorry I'm late about this, the legislative contact and connection, I mean, that's very important, and as I remember Dr. Seibert today, there's a lot of things that, it's important that we do meet with them, to talk about some things coming up that's going to impact our district. So I'm looking forward to those meetings, and hopefully all of us could attend at least one or two, or all of them, if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on. Thank you, Mr. Zenobia, to our Finance and Facilities Committee, with an update presented by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you. The Finance and Facilities Committee meet, Committee met on Monday, April eighth. The agenda included one action item and four discussion items. The first action item was regarding the 2024-2025 Health Insurance Plan. The administration shared several health plan options for the committee to consider. For the last four years, the district has been able to hold premiums flat while maintaining the same basic plan design. The only major plan design change during this period has been federally mandated deductible increases to the district's high deductible health plan. Once again, the federal government is mandating an increase in the single and family plan deductibles of one hundred and two dol, two hundred dollars respectively for 2024-2025. For the first time, the district is considering an increase in deductibles beyond the mandated levels due to inflationary and budgetary pressures. The committee approved the change in the single and family deductible from fifteen hundred and three thousand respectively to eighteen hundred and thirty-six hundred, which includes the mandated increase and the elimination of the split wellness premium copay option. An I so move.
Mrs. Voight?
Second?
Seconded by Mrs. Voight, thank you. Questions?
I thought it was really noteworthy that only twenty percent of our population that's is benefiting from the, from the insurance actually meets the deductible threshold, that really it's, it's not going to impact across the board as much as it might seem, because very few, because of the amazing things that we're doing through the clinic, and the, you know, the, the change with the kiosks for medications and things like that, the deductibles are not being reached as frequently. And I think that that's a significant point to consider with, with the rationalization for the, the change.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm not seeing any further comments or questions, so Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Mark Kelmore?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes nine zero. Mrs. Kozlowski?
Moving on to the discussion and information items, the first discussion item is the Rose Glen Memorial Project. And before we get to the business part of this item, I think it's only appropriate to recognize Karen Simonson for her years of service to the school district of Waukesha. In particular, her commitment to the hundreds, if not thousands, of students she worked with over her career. Her impact on the district not only heard in the kind words shared at the meeting, but is also reflected in this proposed project. The committee reviewed and approved by consensus a landscaping proposal for Rose Glen Elementary to honor former staff member Karen Simonson. This proposal was the first-time policy seventy-two fifty dot oh one, approved in December of 2023, was used in considering requests of this nature. Based on the feedback provided at the meeting, the committee asked the administration to review the possi, the policy for possible revisions. The second discussion item was the North High School Drainage Project. Representatives from the City of Waukesha's Department of Public Works were in attendance to co-present with district administration a proposal that will allow for the completion of necessary storm water management improvements in the area, and provide upgrades to the North High School's grounds. The goal of the project is to reduce flooding by increasing the capacity of the sewers and drainage ditches around North High School. DPW representatives and the administration shared project alternatives that have been considered, and details of a plan that is likely to be recommended in the months ahead. The third discussion item was the 2022-2023 Audit Report. Christina Dahmer from Lauderbach &amp; Amon was in attendance to review the annual financial report and audit for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2023. Lauderbach &amp; Amon's Independent Auditors Report found that the financial statements present fairly in all major respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the school district of Waukesha as of June thirtieth, 2023. Now that the Finance and Facilities Committee and Board of Education have presented the audit findings, and have been provided the opportunity to review the 2022-2023 financial statements, the statements will be posted on the district's website for the community to review.
And the, Mrs. Voight?
Mrs. Voight? One of the points that I bring up every year at this point when we take a look at the audit is the amount of money that has to be transferred from the general fund to cover the cost of special education, because I think it's one of the things that everybody on the board should be aware of, the, 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 the fact that nineteen million dollars is being transferred. If you look to page twenty of the report, you know, it, it's just a reference point for people to take a look at what, what that difference is between what is mandated and what's, what we have to help to make happen.
All right, and the final discussion item was the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education funds. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. The next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, May sixth, 2024, at five-thirty PM in the Board Room, and this concludes my report.
All right, we are almost to the end. We are on to other business, and I just want to take one last moment to acknowledge Mr. McCaffrey's eighteen years of service to the school district of Waukesha, and the fact that tonight will be his last meeting with us until he runs again next year. We'll see how much he likes living in Florida for, for, for the year, but thank you so much. Is there anything that you'd like to say?
Nope, I just appreciate everybody in the district, all of the people that I've worked with, all the students that I've worked with. It's just been a fantastic experience. It's been a great eighteen years. It went super fast, and it is really truly one of the best jobs that I've, that I've had in my life. So, I appreciate everybody I've come in contact with, with the district. So, thank you.
You've seen just an incredible volume of things, variety of things, and the district is better because of your contributions to it, so thank you so much. We're gonna miss you. But we know where to find you. All right, are there any recommendations for future board meetings? Seeing none, we do have a need to adjourn to executive session this evening. We may also have a need to return from executive session this evening, yes. So I'd be looking for someone to read us through both motions this evening. Mr. Moore?
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent G, confirm with legal counsel for the governmental body who was renewing oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, former employee matter. Part C, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the deliberating or negotiating of the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified, sorry, public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. People turn rotation contract, school resource officer contract, in North High School during this project.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Borowski. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Kanig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes nine zero. We are adjourned to close. We will return. Before I forget, our next meeting will be here in the boardroom on Wednesday, May 8, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. All right, we are reconvened to open session. Mr. Wad, will you please take the roll call?
Kerry Kozlowski.
Here.
Betty Kanig.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Mark Kelmore.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
David Wad, here.
All right, everybody is here. We have one action item for this evening. Mr. McCaffrey.
I move approval of the SRO contract as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia.